I'm Lois Martins, a member of League of Women Voters of North County San Diego, and I will be your moderator this evening for this virtual candidates forum. We believe that although we do miss something by not being in person, there are advantages as well. Many more people who otherwise might not be able to attend in person will be able to view the candidates and their responses and will be enabled to be more well-informed when they fill out their ballots. And assisting me this evening is our timer, Ronnie C. Ronnie, you want to put your hand up? And our question sorters are Nancy Hand and Heather Calligan. Now, before beginning with the business at hand, I would like to take a moment to say a few words about League of Women Voters. Our organization was founded in 1920 when women finally, after a very long struggle, won the right to vote. This year marks our 100-year anniversary, which we are celebrating virtually, which is not quite the way we had it planned. Its purpose then was very much, as it is today, to promote active, informed citizen participation at all levels of government through education and advocacy. Now, while we cherish our historic name, for some years now, both women and men are welcome members. The League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate for political office or public office. We do, in some instances, take a position on a particular issue, but only after a very thorough study has been completed. We moderate candidate forums all over the country, using a format that most people feel is fair, balanced, and very informative. We ask candidates to defer from any personal attacks, but stick to the issues. This forum is being recorded, and video-recorded streaming of this forum is limited to authorized entities only and must be shared in its entirety as per the FCC regulations. Now, we ask the public to submit questions online before the forum so that our screeners could review the questions to avoid redundancy, questions of a derogatory nature, or those that are not pertinent to this election. And the questions have then been organized into categories of a similar nature to avoid repetition and to assure that topics of greatest interest are addressed. Candidates, I'm going to ask you to please silence your cellphones, mute yourself when not speaking, and please adhere to the time constraints. Now, the candidates have all been informed that they will each have two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, and one minute to respond to each question. And our timekeeper will hold up a yellow paddle with 30 seconds when 30 seconds remain -- there she is -- and a red paddle when time is up. Thank you, Ronnie. We will alternate who answers each question first. And once again, I want to remind all of you, please, please adhere to the time constraints. And now, to meet our candidates. And perhaps, as I mention your names, you could raise your hand or in some way let the audience know who you are. So our candidates for the Delmar City Council are Dave Drucker, Tracy Martinez, Phil Blair, Bob Gans, Dan Quirk, and Glenn Warren. Thank you. Now, prior to the beginning of this event, the order for speaking was determined randomly, and Mr. Drucker will go first with opening statements and go last with our closing statements. And now, let's begin with our first opening statement. Mr. Drucker.
Thank you, Lois, and thank you, League of Women Voters, and my fellow candidates. I hope all is well with everyone in the audience in the days of COVID-19. These are very strange times, but hopefully this will soon be behind us. My wife, Kristen, and I, along with our Corbies, have lived in Delmar since 1986. It has been my honor to serve you the last four years and from 1996 through 2008 as your council member and mayor. Much has been accomplished in the last four years. Together, we defeated the Marisol Project Measure G to ensure the protection of the north bluff in our community plan. Downtown Camino Del Mar streetscape was completed, City Hall was opened, we created a sea-level rise adaptation plan without managed retreat. Prior to that, we opened the library, powerhouse in 25th Street, lifeguard station, and restrooms, undergrounded the utility poles in the Torrey Pines area, restored the San de Gita lagoon, and now have a river mouth that is consistently open. COVID-19 has caused a significant financial crisis, and severe cuts to the budget have been made. I will do everything possible to protect our reserves and Q funds so the taxes do not have to be raised. Delmar needs leaders who have business experience and a history of involvement within our city. As Delmar emerges from the crisis, there will be much to complete. Underground all utility poles, gain Coastal Commission approval of our sea-level rise adaptation plan without managed retreat, update the mandated housing element while protecting our community plan and are not increasing density, continue the implementation of our client action plan in a sensible manner, resolve the short-term rental issue, become less reliant on fire grounds sales tax revenue, continue to maintain our infrastructure, streets, water, and sewer pipes, leverage technology instead of adding to the city staff. The residential character of Delmar must be preserved with a vibrant downtown, dependent on high experience leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Drucker. Were you able to see the paddles?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. I was concerned about that. Thank you. All right. Next, we will go to Ms. Martinez.
Good evening. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for tonight's forum. I'm Tracy Martinez. I'm an RN and a healthcare director. I moved to Delmar in 2012. To me, the beauty of our small, unique village was the perfect place to call home. I'm running for city council because I believe our community plan is under threat. The community plan protects our beaches, lagoons, bluffs, Torrey Pines, open spaces, oceans, and our quality of life. State-mandated high-density housing requirement could destroy our neighborhoods unless we respond sensibly without violating the principles of our community plan. I protected our community plan by fighting successfully to defeat the large-scale Marisol Measure G. I chaired Traffic and Parking Committee, and I served as vice chair of the Six-Cycle Housing Task Force. Our summary outlines how to fulfill state-mandated affordable housing without rezoning the entire downtown, north commercial, and fragile coastal bluffs as high-density residential. If elected, I will work hard for all residents to find solutions for Delmar's challenges. I'll protect our community plan from changes that would be adverse to our quality of life. I'll defend sea-level rise adaptation plan without managed retreat. We need effective city council liaisons to work with the fairgrounds to build their fair share of affordable housing. I'll work to find a solution for short-term rental issues, move beyond the expensive fruitless lawsuits, and begin the sequel environmental study to move forward. Help our businesses thrive in the future and be more flexible and open-minded. Replenish our financial reserves and Measure Q. Implement wildlife protection plan for Delmar and Crest Canyon, including undergrounding the poles, which is critically important because one spark can cause vast devastation. And we need an effective evacuation plan as well. We need to update our scenic view ordinances and establish safe railroad crossing. These are just a few of the challenges, but I will provide leadership to get them done.
Thank you. And next, we will hear from Mr. Blair.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this forum possible. This is the 100th anniversary of women getting the vote, and tonight is a perfect way to celebrate the importance of voting, especially at the local level. Let me start with my three priorities. Financial stability of Delmar is number one. The pandemic has hit our city budget very hard, mostly due to the lack of revenue from the fairgrounds and TOT taxes. As the owner, for the last 42 years of a large, local business that employs thousands of people, I understand the difficulty of managing resources. I have learned management and leadership skills that will be essential to build a balanced budget and to build back Delmar even better than it is. Our city needs to operate under strict, good business guidelines that will continue to provide essential services to our citizens. Priority number two is short-term rental businesses. I do not want to see Delmar turned into another Pacific beach. Our community character is about families, neighborhoods, and continuing to support our community plan. I am opposed to businesses or individuals buying up Delmar properties to turn them into mini-hotels-style rental properties. Let me be clear: I support 728 ordinance developed with tremendous community input. I am willing to fight the Coastal Commission to avoid the 3-100 policy they are mandating. We need to do what is right for Delmar. And three is local control. It's imperative that we keep local control here in Delmar. We may be the smallest city in the county, but we will have the loudest roar if I'm elected. We need a community where teachers, firefighters, and lifeguards can live and raise their families. Local control is not negotiable to me.
Thank you. Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Mr. Gans.
Well, thank you, Lois, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for doing all of these forums. They're wonderful every two years, and I'm glad to be a part of it, finally. You know, when I was preparing for this forum, it struck me that it's not called a debate. It's called a forum. And I think that's very significant, and I think it's very appropriate for this moment in Delmar. We're facing a number of crises in Delmar right now. We are out of compliance with state law when it comes to affordable housing, and we are facing a tremendous financial crisis. And we need to move beyond the state of mind where we're simply arguing and digging in our heels and name-calling, instead of building bridges and working together to solve the problems that are facing Delmar and working for the good of Delmar. You know, running for city council is not something I ever really planned to do. I've been very happy for the past eight years serving on the board of the Delmar Foundation and for the past five years serving as a member of the city's finance committee. And the reason I enjoy that so much is because they're not political. We have people who come in from all different political views, approach problems in all different ways, and yet we all manage to come together, have calm discussions, and find common ground to work together and solve problems. And I've seen too little of that spirit on the city council in recent years. We need to restore that spirit on the city council, I think. We need people who are willing to work together, who are more concerned about making Delmar a better place than in scoring debaters' points. So I'm looking very much forward to the discussion we have this evening, and I'm just glad to be here. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Gans. Mr. Quirk, you're up next.
Thank you, Lois, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. It's an honor to be running for city council. For several years, I've been devoted to improving Delmar through my work on the Finance Committee, the leadership on getting Measure Q created and passed in 2016, and the related projects to bury the power lines, improve our streets, and beautify Delmar. I believe in a data-driven and solutions-oriented approach to problem-solving. I believe in listening to the people and delivering on what they've asked for. I believe this is what the residents of Delmar want in their elected leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. And you took up less than your two minutes. And finally, we were going to hear from Mr. Warren. Unmute yourself, please. Unmute yourself.
Got it.
There you go.
Thanks, Lois, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, like my fellow panelists tonight. I'm very honored to be here, 100 years after the women got the right to vote in the United States. As I've been campaigning, talking to a lot of folks, there's one question that keeps coming up, and that's, why are you running for city council? And my clear response is, I need the money. Seriously. I am running because I have a lifetime of public service, starting after college and continuing to the present day, and it's my desire to play a role in Delmar as I have the time now that I'm retired. And I hope to answer questions about my views on Delmar, but I'd like to take a moment just to talk a little bit about myself and who I am and how I got here. I graduated from college, I went in the Peace Corps, and I went to Kenya. And after the Peace Corps, I became a lawyer. I was a criminal defense lawyer and practiced primarily in indigent defense and for public defender organizations. In 1996, after living here and after practicing criminal law, I realized a lifetime dream and joined the Foreign Service. And for the next 16 years, I worked in Latin America, Africa, and Afghanistan. And my primary focus was the development of democratic institutions and free and fair elections. When I came back to Delmar, and I had first moved here in 1983, I determined to become involved in the community. And since coming back, I have been a member of the Design Review Board and have engaged in other volunteer activities. And as a member of the city council, if I'm so privileged, I hope to bring a measure of civility to the city council, something which Bob talked about and which I think has been lacking. Thank you.
And thank you all. And now, it is time for the candidates to respond to the questions that have been submitted. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. Extra time for rebuttal is not provided. We provide equal time for each candidate, and as one of the gentlemen said, this is a forum, not a debate. So we're going to begin with the first question. Some of them are rather lengthy. I felt some, as I was reading them, in some cases, I was reading a dissertation. I've tried to take out the opinions, and our wonderful question sorters have tried to synthesize them a bit. The first one reads, "The Delmar Preservation Coalition recommends the withdrawal of the LCPA, Local Coastal Program Amendment, if the California Coastal Commission requires any addition of language that introduces managed retreat or triggers for rewriting the LCP. Are you in agreement with the Beach Preservation Coalition?" And for the first question, we're beginning with Mr. Drucker.
Sorry, I need to unmute.
Yes. There you go. That's hard to remember.
Yeah, it's going to be tough to remember.
I'll jump in and remind you, so don't worry.
Great. I am in total agreement with that, and I believe that managed retreat is not an appropriate way for us to address sea-level rise. The houses at the beachfront are actually protecting the rest of the houses that are below them. Our biggest problem ultimately is the rivers of rain that will create the flooding along the San de Gita River. So I have basically voted that if the Coastal Commission does make us have managed retreat as part of our LCPA, that we withdraw it, and we have that continue to be part of our community plan.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
Well, I agree. I do not support managed retreat. I support the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. I support protecting our beaches and our homes. If the Coastal Commission cannot certify the local coastal plan, I think it must be withdrawn. I think we need to proceed with caution on any amendment to our certified LCP, and we only need to do what is necessary for adaptation tools. I would not vote to accept triggers. I think this could be a slippery slope, and so I support the STACS recommendations, and I want to protect our beaches and our coastal homes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blair.
I don't support managed retreat. I think it's a very extreme reaction. It's too much, too quick. I do support sand replenishment, seawalls, and any other thing we can do to protect the houses there, but I think managed retreat is far too extreme.
Thank you. Mr. Gans.
I agree. I do not support managed retreat for Delmar. I think it's inappropriate for all of the reasons that are set out in our Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. Now, the good news here is, and what a lot of people don't seem to realize, is that when we submitted that plan to the Coastal Commission and laid out why managed retreat was not appropriate for Delmar, the Coastal Commission sent the plan back to us with a lot of markups and a lot of comments, but the one thing they did not comment on was our view that managed retreat was not appropriate for Delmar. So there's no -- contrary to what I think a lot of people believe, the Coastal Commission is not trying to foist managed retreat upon us. I think this is an example of an issue where we have people just trying to stir up our population and doing a little fear-mongering, and we need to get away from that in Delmar and start working together on the real issues that we're facing.
Thank you. And Mr. Quirk.
I agree with the statement. I would withdraw if necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Warren.
Please unmute.
I am against managed retreat as well. The city of Delmar is now in negotiations with the California Coastal Commission. The California Coastal Commission has come back with certain requests, certain recommendations. To the extent those try to impose managed retreat on us without saying managed retreat, I would oppose them. And if it comes to withdrawing our local coastal plan amendment, I would do that as well. Delmar cannot tolerate managed retreat. I will not support it.
Okay, thank you. And the next question, I think I hit -- yeah, make sure I got you all in there. The next question has to do with the train corridor. "In the past four years, the city council did nothing to resolve the train corridor beach access issues. If elected, what will you do in the next four years?" And we're going to begin this one with -- going to begin this one with Mr. Warren.
Okay.
Please unmute.
Thank you. I was just talking today with somebody about this issue, and I realized that particularly for people that live in that area, beach access is important, and the ability to get over the railroad tracks and down to the beach is important. I know that Mr. Drucker has been on the city council for about 16 years. He's been a liaison to the Transit District, and he has talked about trying to get railroad crossings and beach access across the rails. He's been unable to do it. If I am elected to the council, I will work with the Transit District. I will work with local officials. I will do everything I can to provide beach access and railroad crossing for people that live in that area and for all people that live in Delmar. But it's going to be difficult, and I think our primary goal is to get those trains off the tracks as soon as possible so that everybody can enjoy the bluff and can get to the beach uninhibited by the tracks.
Thank you. Mr. Drucker, would you respond, please?
Yes. So over the past couple of years, the council has put some money away so that we could do a study, and will, along with NCTD, to provide for safe crossings across the track, basically at 11th Street, 8th Street, down by the Torrey Pines beach, and up somewhere in the north beach area. So we have done that. We've tried to work with NCTD to do that. With COVID, we've had to back off on that, yet NCTD now is agreeing that they will fund this project so that we can do that type of work. I have consistently been for allowing people to cross the tracks unfettered at this point, and that continues to happen, and it's still working in terms of our ability to cross the tracks, get to the beach, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martinez.
I also support working with NCTD to get safe crossing. I think there's two issues. One is safety, and we've had some deaths on the tracks, which is very tragic. And the other is that I think a lot of foot traffic contributes to coastal erosion. Right now, we have about six inches of coastal erosion on our bluffs per year. So I think we need access, and I think we need to protect more erosion on the bluffs. So I'm fully supportive of that, and I think that we need to do everything we can to push NCTD to come to give us some help in getting safe crossing at significant areas where traffic is high and prevent crossing where there isn't safe crossing. So I support it fully.
Thank you. Mr. Blair.
Well, the long-term solution is clearly to get the trains off of the bluffs and open the entire beach side of Delmar to the beach. That's a long-term solution. There are five alternatives, and we know that Sandag is researching all of those, and that should start within five or 10 years. But in the short term, we do need safe crossings to get across the railroads. I understand 12 people have died in the last year along the tracks in Delmar. This is one of those examples where we need to be on the NTCD and ROR, where this tiniest town, Encinitas, is now getting its second tunnel under the tracks, and we need to get our first and make sure that Sandag and also NTCD pay attention to Delmar and make it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Gans.
Well, you know, my friend Dave has been in charge of that issue for most of the 16 of the past 24 years he's been on the council. He hasn't succeeded in creating one safe pedestrian crossing, and now he's talking about creating four crossings in the next four years. I don't think that's realistic. I don't think that's going to happen. State law now prohibits at-grade crossings. You have to get a waiver from that. And even if we get a waiver, we have to create an ADA-compliant ramp down to the bluffs. Now, the good news is, on what's going on in the repairs to the track down at the south end of town, there is a plan for a safe crossing there, and that's great. Unfortunately, we don't have funding for that, but we have to fight for that. But the long-term plan is, we have to get those train tracks off the bluffs, and we're not going to get them off the bluffs like another candidate is suggesting, by just ending rail traffic between San Diego and the rest of the country. We need to address this quickly because those train tracks on the bluffs are just a disaster waiting to happen.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Quirk.
Great. Well, Bob, thank you for the lead-in, and I opened with my comments earlier that I believe in data-driven decisions. And I created a website earlier. It's called the Coaster Rail to Trail Project, and part of the goal was to bring a lot of data about the train and ridership numbers and usage. And we're talking about potentially billions of dollars, tens of billions of dollars being spent on this trail or train removal and trains throughout the county. And if you look at the numbers, the ridership levels are incredibly low. So I'm not saying necessarily that we should remove it. I'm saying that we should look at the data very seriously. And I've spoken with a number of organizations and people, and I'll say, without exception, they are all very surprised at how low the usage numbers actually are when put into appropriate context. So let's look at the data and then make a good decision based on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lois, because Bob Gans did mention my name, can I have a response to that?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We cannot have any kind of rebuttal. I'm sorry, Mr. Drucker. But I would also caution the candidates to please do not make any comments regarding other candidates. Please stick to the issues and what your opinion is, not what you think anybody else's opinion is. Okay? All right. The next question has to do with affordable housing, and we're going to begin the responses with Ms. Martinez this time. "How do you see Delmar implementing the state mandate for affordable housing without jeopardizing the community plan? What is your opinion on the job numbers used to determine affordable housing allocation?" Ms. Martinez.
Thank you for that question. I am in full support of affordable housing in Delmar, but I'm in for doing our fair share. So proposals for affordable housing through high-density development, however, will impact Delmar forever. It will be permanent. So we need to be thoughtful about it, and we need viable solutions. I was the vice chair of the Affordable Housing Ad Hoc Committee, and in that, we outlined in our summary viable solutions without major rezonings and high-density building and assaulting our community plan. Affordable housing allocation jobs are based on two problems. Delmar jobs, there is no validation Del Mar jobs, there is, there is no validation in the jobs of Del Mar and also the jobs that were assigned to us because of the 2,000 seasonal jobs of the fairgrounds. I think it's crazy that our mayor did not challenge this. I think we need to challenge this. I don't know any other profession where we can move forward by accepting flawed data. So we need to verify these jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blair, would you respond next?
Certainly. I'm very supportive of affordable housing. As I talked about, I, I think I want Del Mar to be a locale where teachers can live and firefighters and lifeguards can raise their families here. We have some sites that are very appropriate for it. The city council made a terrible decision last week when they voted down an opportunity to put this entire issue to rest. The North Coastal Professional Area is an excellent site for potential housing, and using excuses like fire egress and ingress is, is wrong. It's a perfect site, and I hope it's brought back to our city council, and they'll give the appropriate votes going forward. We can solve this. It's not that difficult. And we do not want to lose our local control to the state and then come in and tell us exactly how many units and where they're going to be because they might just select the bluffs as the easiest option.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gans?
Yeah, I agree with Phil. The city council, I believe, made a very dangerous reckless decision last Tuesday by putting us in conscious violation of state law. We decided seven years ago that we were going to amend the zoning for the North Commercial District to allow for affordable housing there. And the city council last week reneged on that commitment. And as a result, Del Mar is now facing fines of up to $100,000 a month. We're facing civil lawsuits, and we're facing possible loss of control over our zone. And there are a lot of people around who are talking about defending our community plan, but I don't know how we're going to defend our community plan if we lose control of our zone. Just look at what's happened in Encinitas where their zoning is being controlled not by their community, but by the courts. That would be a disaster for Del Mar, and it would be a disaster for our community plan.
Thank you. Mr. Quirk?
Thank you. Tracy mentioned data. Again, this is another problem where data can be helpful. Del Mar's requirements, whether or not you agree with the fairgrounds' numbers and how they're calculated for the jobs, why are we being included with the fairgrounds anyway? That's my first question. We do not control the fairgrounds, so we should be totally separate. And if we're not, then the fairgrounds should be a really great location. There's a lot of land there. I spoke with the new CEO, Carleen Moore, recently, and they're looking for partnerships. We need some energy and creativity to get something done. There's no easy solution. But as far as within the limits of Del Mar City, I think looking to create incentives for homeowners to create ADUs, accessory dwelling units, that actually qualify could be a really great way to do it, and looking potentially at some city-owned properties where we can get some units without the large impact on the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Warren?
Please unmute.
In 2013, the city of Del Mar made a commitment to the state of California that it would arrange for 22 affordable housing units in the next eight years. And eight years have passed, and we have not done that. We are now at danger of having our housing plan, our fifth housing element, decertified with fines and other penalties. Perhaps worse, we're in danger of having the state of California come in and zone for us in areas such as the North Commercial District. I believe that the decision of the city council last week was completely irresponsible. City staff had made a proposal to the, to the city. The planning commission unanimously approved that recommendation, and yet the city council, on a three-to-two vote, declined to approve that measure. Now we are looking at development on the North Bluff, development on the South Bluff, and development in other areas where we will have no control over our zoning. Local control.
Okay, thank you very much. And lastly, Mr. Druker?
Thank you, Lois. To answer the question specifically, affordable housing is absolutely essential in Del Mar. And actually, we do have a lot of people, a diverse community here down in the apartment areas at the North Beach and South Bluff area. And the Sixth Element Housing Group, that ad hoc group that was chaired by, both vice, was co-chaired by Tracy Martinez, has come up with a way that we can provide affordable housing without busting the community plan. In terms of the jobs, you know, the job, half of our jobs are coming from temporary employees that work at the fairgrounds. And so therefore, we need to be working with the fairgrounds to provide affordable housing for their workers, for the residents of all the county, and as state-owned property, we, they need to help solve this problem rather than forcing it on Del, on Del Mar.
Thank you. And now the next question, very short. What is your position on short-term rentals? And we will begin this one with Mr. Gans.
I am a firm believer in 728, the, the ordinance that provides for a minimum stay of seven days and no more than 28 days per year. I think it is critical that short-term rental businesses in our residential zones be regulated. If they are unregulated, they have a terrible impact on our neighborhoods, I think. And I also think they use up housing stock that could be used to satisfy our state mandate. I am also, I also think that 728 was arrived at through a very thorough process that consumed years, involved extensive citizen input, can involve consultations with experts, and is a good compromise that makes sense. And I don't think it makes any sense to tear that up now and start over again because there's nothing new out there. This is something, we have to stop fighting the old battles. We have to accept our compromises, accept our community's decisions, and then move on.
Thank you. Mr. Quirk?
I think the majority of residents in Del Mar favor some sort of regulation. I find it remarkable that we've been debating this for as long as we have, and I'm going to come back to comment on data. I think this is the perfect type of issue where we put out a survey. You could do something like Survey Monkey, poll 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 people and see what they think. Put out some proposals out there, and what that does is it creates transparency for the process and where people lie. So whether you win or lose, you can see where the results are. And you know what? We can move on rather than continue to debate about it. So again, I think the majority of residents favor some form of very serious regulation, but I think adding some clarity to how we arrived at whatever regulation we choose would be helpful for everyone in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warren?
After years of debate and after years of meetings, the city council approved the 728 ordinance, which Mr. Gans has described. I support that ordinance. I think short-term rental regulation is necessary. One, because short-term rentals create nuisances. Two, because it's necessary to the integrity of our neighborhood, so we don't have people coming and going, but we get to know our neighbors. And three, because short-term rentals deplete the housing stock that's available for people who want to live here or rent on a long-term basis. I do not support going back to the Coastal Commission and negotiating and having the Coastal Commission tell us, well, maybe 103, that is a three-days minimum, 100-days maximum a year, is a solution. We have to take a position. We have to tell the Coastal Commission that we are not going to allow them to dictate to us how we exercise our zoning and police powers and our regulation of short-term rentals.
Thank you. Mr. Druker?
Yes, so I think we all agree, or most of us agree, and most of the people in this town agree, that short-term rentals have the ability to create or reduce the amount of residential character in Del Mar. And therefore, we do need to regulate them. The Coastal Commission has rejected 287. We sued the Coastal Commission. We lost that suit. And basically now, we, we are in a position where we need to figure out how to negotiate with the Coastal Commission based upon having a comprehensive plan that would include housing stock loss, et cetera. 100 slash 3 is not an appropriate number for Del Mar, and we basically need to figure this out. If we do not start regulating short-term rentals, eventually the city could be very well overrun by them, and we need to figure out how to regulate it and do it as quickly as possible now.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Yes, I don't think this is a black-and-white issue, but I do think we need to find a solution. Three of the candidates here want to continue to litigate the 728, and I don't believe most residents want to spend more than $180,000. It's already been spent trying to litigate this problem. I think short-term rentals can affect housing stock for sure. I think now with registered ones, we have 29 registered short-term rentals, which is about 1% of our total housing stock. The Coastal Commission didn't accept the 728. They had the counter of 3100. Endless lawsuits are fruitless, and they're expensive. If we can come to an agreement with the Coastal Commission, we can regulate them. Right now, they're not regulated. We can have a rapid response for complaints. Two strikes and you lose your short-term rental permit. We can come up with all kinds of solutions with regulations so these aren't a burden in the neighborhood. We can keep our permit level low, but I think we need to end with the lawsuits. Why would we win again when we have already lost over and over? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Blair?
I covered this issue in my opening comments, so you know how important I think it is. We don't need to talk about needing more data. We don't need to talk about monkey surveys. The public has spoken with tremendous support on the 728. The 3100 is absolutely untenable. Can you imagine three-day rentals 100 times a year? We would be Pacific Beach again. We have not lost the lawsuit. People keep saying we've lost it. It's been put on hold, and we can talk to the attorneys about the details on that case, but it's not lost. We cannot roll over and accept 3100 and move on like it's not going to make a difference to us. We have to fight this in court. It's worth every penny we spend, and we've got to win this. It is a definite issue about San Diego, about Del Mar. Thank you.
And thank you. Our next question states, what, what is your plan to address the drastically increased helicopter noise in Del Mar? And we're going to begin this one with Mr. Quirk.
Well, that's an interesting question. I know that the sheriffs have been out circling sharks at one point. I think that's probably not an appropriate use for sheriff helicopters. I think the lifeguards or merely swimmers on the, on the beach can figure out what to do if there's a shark in the water. Hey, we live in a coastal community. We have a lot of traffic. There's airplanes with banners. You know, we do have the military that needs to do their thing. I think we need to have a reasonable approach to this. I have noticed it more because I think I'm working from home more as a result of the COVID issue, as are a lot of other people, but we need to have a reasonable response to this, and we have to make sure that people aren't inappropriately using a helicopter. And I think the sheriffs have something to do with that, so maybe we can reach out to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warren, would you respond?
Well, Lois, I was hoping you weren't going to ask me that question first because it's not something I've given a great deal of thought to. I, I live near the beach, not far from where Dan lives. I hear the helicopters go over. Some of them are sheriff's helicopters. Some of them are going from Miramar to, to the Naval Air Station. It can be disturbing. If people think it's a problem, I, and I'm on the council, I will certainly talk to the sheriff about them. I will talk to the military about them. I'm not sure what can be done. I'm concerned about noise, whether it's helicopters or whether it's motorcycles passing by my house. I think we want to have a tranquil community, and I'll do everything I can to make that possible.
Thank you. Mr. Druker, would you respond?
Yeah, noise pollution is obviously a very huge concern, especially in these days of COVID-19 as most people are working from home. The city probably and should, and it's something that, as, as we move along, could set up a hotline so people could complain. Also, people should be complaining to the Miramar in terms of the helicopters that are coming from the marines and going up to Camp Pendleton from Miramar. Obviously, there's a lot of private helicopters and also TV helicopters, et cetera. But, you know, it probably makes sense at this point for us to set up a complaint line and start seeing and having people start logging those complaints so that we as a city can do something about it.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, would you respond, please?
Yes, they irritate me too, as do motorcycles, Glenn. I hear you. I don't know what all the motors, what all the helicopters are from. I think there's some military. I think there are some police. I live more on the hill, and I've tried to identify where they are because they are quite annoying. They're early in the morning, and they're late at night, and they go right along the coast. And some of them fly really, really low, and so I think that's a safety concern. So I think we need to have somebody track them, maybe the lifeguards, and see who's doing the, the majority of these flyovers, and then talk to the, the party who's responsible because I really feel for people right on the beach. It's very loud, and it's annoying, and they're too, they're often flying too low for safety.
Thank you. Mr. Blair?
Well, it's interesting. I'd like to segue this conversation to motorcycles too because I find those so irritating when they're gunning their motors going through quiet Del Mar. The helicopters are not a problem to me, and I'll tell you why. When I, when, just two days ago, a helicopter was flying over our house, and it was looking for a lost child. Now, if you're a parent and your child is missing at the beach or is afraid is drowning, I would want that helicopter to come out and look for them. And if it's the Coast Guard keeping our coast safe, I want them to do their thing. I think this is an issue looking for complaints. I don't think it's that bad of an issue, and I think if we'll pay attention to them, those helicopters are doing a service that we would really want. If our, as I said, if our child or loved one was missing, I would want a helicopter out there looking for them.
Thank you. Mr. Gans?
Well, like everyone else, I'm irritated by the helicopters. I'm irritated by the motorcycles. I'm irritated by a lot of things that I really wasn't that irritated by before the pandemic. But now, like all of us, I'm sitting around at my house, and I'm noticing things a lot more irritating. And it's infecting our community, frankly. We need to find ways to join together now to get through this pandemic and get back to normal. We need to find ways to help our business community so that it's possible to go back out to dinner and, and have more places to go and go into stores. And we need to find ways to be able to socialize in a responsible manner so we're not spreading the pandemic, but by the same token, we're remembering that we live in the greatest place in the world. And unfortunately, for the past months, we haven't been able to appreciate that. So I am just in favor of doing whatever we can to get back to normal as quickly as possible and then address these nuisances.
Thank you. And this is going to be our final question. What do you believe should be done with the privately-held North Bluff properties? And we are going to begin with Mr. Druker.
The North Bluff properties are zoned for low-density housing, and there could be up to about 16 houses. They would each be about one-story tall. A couple of them could be two-story tall. Basically, that's the zoning for that. The people of Del Mar have spoken and basically said that's what they want to see happen up there, and I think that's an appropriate use of that property. It would be nice to expand the preserve and, and have a little bit bigger park up there and have a better access to that preserve from the south end. That's to be seen.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martinez?
So I did not support the Marisol project. I thought it was too broad, too large, too vague. It is an iconic bluff loved by most people in Del Mar. So whatever goes up there should be respectful of the fragility of this bluff. There was height limitations. Marisol would have overwrote those. So I think it's really important that it's thoughtful, that we know what the development is going to be prior to getting it approved. That did not happen with the Marisol project. And I too want to make sure that the view corridors are protected and, and that we also have access to it. I've heard some of the candidates say, we finally will get access if Marisol was approved. We've always had access. We have a preserve up there, and if any development happens, there must be trails. We have a preserve up there, and if any development happens, there must be trails around the perimeter of the property. So I want to see it as low density as possible, something that we can all enjoy, whatever that might be. But I also want to be very mindful about the fragile bluffs and be respectful of that.
Thank you. Mr. Blair.
Yeah, that's a tough question. I mean, somebody the other day told me that the land on the bluffs is valued at $100,000 to $150 million. That is a lot of money. Someone today asked me that, "Why don't we just turn it into parkland and the city buy it from private sector people?" With that, especially with the issues we're having right now, that's unreasonable. I want access up there. I'm concerned about 12 or 16 houses being built up. They're walled-in gated community, and we get the skinny little bluff frontage to walk along. So I'm looking for a development that is reasonably financially, but that lets Del Martians and people from Solana Beach have access and really enjoy the bluffs. It's not Marisol, and whatever happens should go to a vote of the people in Del Mar to make sure we're happy with it. But hopefully, it's not just 12 or 16 privately-held houses.
Thank you. Mr. Gans.
Yeah, if I had my druthers, we'd raise that $150 million, and we'd buy it all up, and it would be a great public park. That's not in the cards. I did support Marisol. I don't agree with Tracy that we do have access now. We have access to a tiny wall strip of that bluff, and the rest of it is zoned to be closed off. And I support Marisol because I thought there was a possibility for an environmentally-friendly development that would be properly controlled and regulated through Del Mar's regulatory mechanisms and through the Coastal Commission's mechanisms. That said, the community voted it down, 60/40. It's decisive. And if I were on the city council and that issue came up tomorrow, I would oppose it. I'd vote no. The most important thing is whenever there's an issue of a significant private development in Del Mar is that go to a public vote. That's the Del Mar way. That's the process we need to pursue. So right now, the community is supporting the current zoning, so I'm respecting the community's wishes.
Thank you. Mr. Quirk.
Yeah, I think it was pretty clear based on the results of the vote that bluff is iconic. And if you step back and think about, hey, if we need to develop something somewhere, perhaps to get affordable housing units, the place to do it is not right on the water, right over this beautiful beach and lagoon where thousands of people come to to get relief from the congestion and concrete. The place to do it is closer to the Five Highway. You know, the fairgrounds has a great piece of land right there. So we need to think strategically. If there's going to be development, that's the place to do it. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Warren.
I think the question was, what would I like to see on the bluff? And what I would like to see is a thoughtful aesthetic development that provides access in all areas of the bluff. And I agree that if there is a project that's presented, whatever it is, it ought to go to a community vote because I think that's the way we've dealt with important, large projects in Del Mar. What scares me is that because of the council's refusal to enact or to follow the staff recommendation on affordable housing, it's very possible that the state is going to come into the North Bluff. And under Assembly Bill 1397, which requires the city to inventory vacant property to put affordable housing on, the state is going to compel rezoning there, 20 dwelling units to an acre, and we're going to lose the bluff forever. And I want to see a great development there. If it's going to be developed, we've got to do it in the right way, and the city council by its own is preventing us from doing that.
Thank you. And that concludes our question part of this forum, and we are going to go now to your closing comments, and we will go in the reverse order. So we will be starting with Mr. Warren. You have two minutes to make your closing statement. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Lois, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to talk with you tonight and present our views and answer some questions. I want to go briefly to one issue which was discussed in some depth tonight and which I think is existentially important to Del Mar, and that's the issue of short-term rentals. And people have talked about the fact that they don't like 103. We've got to get together with the Coastal Commission and work something out. The Coastal Commission has not denied our approach for 728 yet. We had a lawsuit with them. We went back and forth. The lawsuit was thrown out on a technicality. This has never been decided by a court, and I think it's important, and I think Phil mentioned this, that we get a judicial determination at some point as to whether we can regulate satisfactorily short-term rentals in Del Mar. If I'm a member of the council, that's going to be my first priority. It's not going to be to sit down with the Coastal Commission and say, "How can we, in a kumbaya moment, get together and resolve this?" We've got to take a firm position. And what's really important, I think, is that we maintain local control, whether it's short-term rentals, whether it's housing, whether it's sea level rise. The state is trying to make demands of us. We've got to stand our ground, and we have got to exercise local control. Now, let me finish by saying that we are going to have disagreements. If I'm on the council, I'm going to disagree with fellow council members. We're going to have disagreements. We're not going to be able to resolve all of them. What I can pledge, though, is that I will listen to everybody, people on the council, people in the community. I will exercise my best judgment based upon my experience to make the best decision possible. And when I disagree, I will do so agreeably. I think there's been too much lack of civility in Del Mar, and I pledge that if I'm a member of the council, I'm going to try to bring harmony to the council and between the council and the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Quirk, would you go next, please?
Again, thank you, Lois, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. I'm going to conclude with my open and repeat it. So I'm going to say it's an honor to be running for city council. I've been devoted to improving Del Mar through my work on the Finance Committee, the leadership on getting Measure Q created and passed in 2016, and the related projects to bury the power lines, improve our streets, and beautify Del Mar. I do believe in a data-driven and solutions-oriented approach to problem-solving. I believe in listening to the people and delivering on what they've asked for. I also believe in short answers. I believe this is what residents are looking for in their elected leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gans.
Well, thank you, Lois, for running this, and I want to say thank you to my fellow candidates. I think this has been a terrific discussion, and I hope we can have more of these going forward. I want to talk a little bit about the community plan because it's, I think, important to everyone on here. You know, things get heated in the middle of election, and you hear people say, "Oh, he's the only one who supports the community plan," or "She doesn't support the community plan." And I'm hoping that from here on in, we can get away from rhetoric like that. I don't think there can be any doubt that anyone up here on this screen right now supports the community plan. But I think it's important for all of us to remember exactly what that community plan is. The community plan has a lot of elements to it. One of it is the zoning for our residential neighborhoods, and we've done a great job of upholding that. Part of it is acquiring open space, and I think we've done a great job of upholding that. Part of it is building a vital downtown retail community, something that unfortunately we didn't get to talk about tonight, something which is critically important to Del Mar and something which I think we've just abjectly failed at over the past 50 years since the community plan was enacted, and we need to address that. We need to address the affordable housing elements of the community plan. Again, these goals were set in the mid-'70s, and we still haven't achieved them. We don't have any credibility to complain to anyone at the state about our affordable housing allocation until we create at least one affordable housing unit in Del Mar. So I hope that we can all join together. I hope that we can all recommit to the community plan, and I hope that we can all work together to make some real progress in making Del Mar a better place. Please, if you like what you hear from me, go to gans2020.com. Give me a call, 858-342-5555.
Thank you. Mr. Blair.
Thank you. Let me repeat my three priorities, which are the financial stability of the city of Del Mar, affordable housing, and local control. After our conversation, I think I'd like to add motorcycle noise to that also as a priority. But we live in such a wonderful community and wonderful city. We want it all to keep it that way. We don't want to live in Pacific Beach. If we wanted to, we'd move down there. But we want to keep the community plan alive. We want to keep families here. We want to keep the community feeling that we have, and that's what is important. I think it's important also we work together, and thank you. This is the first opportunity the six of us have had to get together and listen to each other. So it's a wonderful forum for us to learn from each other. But we've got to start making things happen. We can't be the city that says, "No, no, no. Let's reanalyze. Let's do a survey. Let's talk about data." We've got to make things happen. We've got to make them happen downtown so we can have viable downtown and earn sales tax income to help balance our budget. We've got to make a place where people can live that want to raise their families here in Del Mar. And we've got to think about what we can do to move forward and make things happen. Like the Civic Center was wonderful. Streetscape is wonderful. We need to do more of those instead of just digging in and saying, "No, no, no" to things. And that's what I think our council wants to do, and that's the council that I want to be a part of. And it takes conversation. It takes respect for each other and understanding each other, but then voting and moving forward and making things happen. And that's the kind of city council that I want to sit on, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
This election is one of the most important for Del Mar's future. There's a big distinction between me and three other candidates as I see it. What Del Mar becomes in the near future will be determined by this election. I am for protecting the community plan and preventing massive developments. They are not. You cannot say that you're here to protect the community plan and endorse massive developments like G and J. I'm for protecting our fragile bluffs and lagoons. Measure G would have put that at risk. We will be taxed with how to achieve affordable housing requirements. We can follow the innovative and less invasive suggestions of the Housing Task Force, or we can turn our keys over to developers, and they can take their toll on the city. The first option is what I prefer. If you want Del Mar to remain the unique village by the sea, maintain our quality of life, and be the place that everybody dreams about living, then please vote for me. Del Mar faces many challenges: financial, development, sea level rise, resolving short-term rental issues, to name a few. If elected, I will listen to all sides and put residents' opinions in the forefront of my decisions. I will make eye contact with you when you come before the council to voice your concerns. I will not come to a meeting unprepared, but I will hear all sides and do what's best for the majority of the residents before casting my vote. Many residents and business owners feel disenfranchised. I will make their opinions and their concerns a priority. And lastly, I will honor the community parent, its language and its spirit, be consistent and impartial, align city priorities and spending with community priorities, listen to the entire community to ensure all viewpoints are respected and represented. And I will do my best for the community, not for myself or a small group of what residents might want, but for all. I will be impartial, responsive, hardworking, and trustworthy. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Druker.
Thank you, Lois. Thank you to the League for setting up this forum and to my fellow candidates for having a robust discussion, and the citizens of Del Mar for asking some great questions. My longevity in the council has been based upon me being reasonable, listening to all constituents, being fiscally prudent, providing a check and balance to the city staff, and ensuring Del Mar maintains a small village character. If elected, I will continue to attend the farmer's market on a monthly basis to listen to your concerns once the COVID emergency has passed. You, the voters, are offered a stark choice. There are three candidates that are supported by a faction in Del Mar that supported two massive development projects, Marisol and the Village Specific Plan of 2012, that were overwhelmingly defeated by you. They would not support other cities in the county to reduce our affordable housing allocation. They supported giving a bonus to the city manager when he was rated as working at expectation and had just fired Chief Lifeguard Pat Fromm. They supported a lawsuit against the Coastal Commission on short-term rentals, spent over $100,000, and lost. If these three candidates are elected, a supermajority in the council will have the ability to make changes to the community plan like Marisol without your consent. The residential character of Del Mar must be preserved along with a vibrant downtown. I ask that you vote for Tracy Martinez and Dave Druker. We represent the large majority of you in town that are skeptical about government and do not want massive change to our small town that would all chose to live in, Del Mar. I will continue to listen to your concerns, so please call, text, or email me, davidd157@yahoo.com, Please stay safe, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Druker. And with that, we are concluding our forum, and as we do, I would like to direct you to our website, and I'm going to hold it up here, too, votersedge.org/cA. This is a wonderful online resource for more information about the candidates, the ballot issues, and other detailed voting information. And also, I wish to thank and commend these candidates for their courage and their willingness to run for public office. They are truly making democracy work. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.